Okay, we are now live.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. Counsel, I appreciate all of you accommodating this change in our direction. Late last week, the province passed legislation which permitted us to carry on our meeting by teleconference. Our original intention was to have a meeting in the council chambers and to demonstrate proper social distancing. But as the week wore on and as we moved into late Friday, early Saturday, it became apparent to the CEO and I, and after some discussion with some of you independently on things that you were hearing and seeing around the community, that we should probably model some different behavior that we want to see. So instead of showing people what social distancing looked like, we wanted to show people what not going out if you didn't have to look like. We think it's a critically important message that we share right now with our community at large, and we thought we could do that by way of this meeting. You know, we all hope to get back together soon, and certainly we all hope to have a meeting together soon. But in the meantime, I think we have to focus on the primary goal, which is preserving the health and safety of our individual community members, but our community at large. The best way that we assess we could do this is to encourage people to minimize their social interactions to the greatest degree possible, to not go out if they don't have to. So on that amendment, I want to thank everybody for accommodating this meeting. I want to thank our broadcasting and reporting partners for adjusting to this change. And I want to recognize our IT staff, who in a very short period of time had organized this for us and make sure we had the proper infrastructure to do it. I can tell you all that it is still being streamed, a live stream by Sue today, and it is also being broadcast by Shaw, so we thank both of them for accommodating this change. The clerk and the CEO are both in council chambers, sitting in appropriate distance apart. I am separate from them, and you're all on your own. So on that note, I want to, as we go through this, I will be doing roll calls for votes, and I will give everybody an opportunity to speak on all the matters that are substantive and on the matters that may not be as pressing. You can send me a text if you want to speak, or you could indicate it just on the phone, and I'm sure I'll be able to recognize each one of your voices. So we need a motion to adopt the minutes. Madam Clerk, if you could read that motion, please.
Can I please take roll call first, and then I'll pass the bylaw that allows us to meet electronically?
Okay.
Counselor Christian?
Here.
Counselor Hollingsworth?
Here.
Counselor Dufour?
Here.
Counselor Vezzo Allen?
Here.
Counselor Hilsinger?
Here.
Counselor Shoemaker?
Here.
Counselor Bruni?
Here.
Counselor Nero? Counselor Gardi?
Here.
And Counselor Scott?
Here.
So I'll just read the motion adopting the bylaw that amends the procedure bylaw to allow us to meet electronically. It's a motion by Counselors Shoemaker and Hollingsworth, resolved that bylaw 2020-76 being a bylaw to amend bylaw 23100, a bylaw to regulate proceedings of council of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, be passed in open council this 23rd day of March 2020.
Counselor Christian?
Four.
Counselor Hollingsworth?
Four.
Counselor Vezzo Allen?
Four.
Counselor Dufour?
Four.
Counselor Shoemaker?
Four.
Counselor Hilsinger?
Four.
Counselor Nero?
Four.
Counselor Bruni?
Four.
Counselor Gardi?
Four.
Counselor Scott?
Four.
I too am in favor. Motion's carried.
Under Agenda Item 1, Adoption of Minutes, a motion by Counselors Hilsinger and Hollingsworth that minutes of regular meeting of council March 9, 2020 be approved.
Counselor Christian?
Four.
Counselor Hollingsworth?
Four.
Counselor Vezzo Allen?
Four.
Counselor Dufour?
Four.
Counselor Shoemaker?
Four.
Counselor Hilsinger?
Four.
Counselor Nero?
Four.
Counselor Bruni?
Four.
Counselor Gardi?
Four.
Counselor Scott?
Four.
I'm also in favor. If we move to item 3 on our agenda, Declaration of Community Interest, I have conflicts of interest declared by Counselor Shoemaker on item 3.173 Box Street. The selling client of that property is a client of his law firm. I also have the bylaw that goes along with that, bylaw 202077. The vendor is a client of his law firm. Are there any other conflicts of interest, counsel? I hear none. We'll move on to a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Madam Clerk?
A motion by Counselors Shoemaker and Christian, resolved that the agenda for March 23, 2020, city council meeting as presented, be approved?
Counselor Christian?
Four.
Counselor Hollingsworth?
Four.
Counselor Vezzo Allen?
Four.
Counselor Dufour?
Four.
Counselor Shoemaker?
Four.
Counselor Hilsinger?
Four.
Counselor Nero?
Four.
Counselor Bruni?
Four.
Counselor Gardi?
Four.
Counselor Scott?
Four.
I am also in favor. So that brings us to the consent agenda. Counsel, I'm going to leave. I think we should leave 6.1 to the end, and we should deal with the remainder of the matters first, because I think 6.1 would take the most substantial part of our time. I've got a request from Counselor Vezzo Allen to speak to 6.3, so I will start there. Counselor Vezzo Allen on 6.3.
Certainly. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Girardi available for comment?
Everybody's available.
Okay. So through you to Mr. Girardi, under the purchases, which come to a total of just over $640,000 of your $1.34 million budget, the sanding plow truck at $178,000, what exactly does that service in terms of public works and their scope of work?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Vezzo Allen, this is Susan Hamilton Beach. This would serve as a regular plow for our winter maintenance, as well as a sander, and include the full dump box, as is listed there.
So for streets?
Correct.
Okay. And then the sweeps are at $198K. Hamilton Beach, what would that service? Is that sweeps for roads, or is it just for sidewalks?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Vezzo Allen, this is actually, we've been looking for this extensively. This is now to serve us for our bike lanes, our sidewalk boulevards in the downtown core particularly, and potentially our trail network. So this is a unique feature that we really hope to advance our fleet.
Okay. Thank you so much. No further questions on that matter.
Does anybody else want to speak to 6.3? Seeing none, I have both counselors, hearing none, sorry, Counselors Gardi and Counselor Scott indicate to me they want to speak to 6.4, so I'll move to 6.4. Counselor Gardi, we'll start with you, and then we'll go to Counselor Scott.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Through you two, I would assume, Mrs. Hamilton Beach, just one quick question. You're going with the 2020 case for the front-end loader. I'm just wondering if the city, the public works has had experience with caseloaders in the past, and how that's been, just relative to the other makes and models that were put out, that were returned on the tender?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Gardi, yes, in fact, the case is what we've had in our fleet over the past five years, and we've had excellent service from it. From them.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. That's it.
Okay, Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to, I'm assuming as well, Ms. Hamilton Beach, my question is, it's around the schedules and the operation we got. So how many hours are these leases for? It doesn't specify, but it does give a dollar amount if we go over on hours?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Scott, we in fact looked an average the last five years, and this is based on 1,000 hours per season.
Okay. And then I do have a follow-up question. Do we answer going over those, or that's based on, like you said, so that's kind of our historical average?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Scott, that actually allowed us a fair contingency.
Oh, great. That was everything for my question. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else that wants to speak to? Counselor Bruni, do you have a question on that same topic?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a quick question to this.
Yeah, go ahead.
Regarding the billing, so after 1,000 hours, as you stated, we're charged $45 an hour. I'm just looking at it, compared to the mall, it is the highest hourly charge.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bruni, based on the average and the contingency, we do not foresee going into any extra hour scenario.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else on 6.4? Okay, thank you. I've had Counselor Vezzo Allen also indicate she wanted to speak to 6.7. So Counselor Vezzo Allen, 6.7.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, and this isn't really a question, it's just more of a comment and some information that I want to give on 6.7.
Well, go ahead.
Certainly. I just want to thank Mr. Natto for his vision with what we could do for temporary shelter and space, in terms of, you know, the more than adequate square footage that's available at the Steelton Senior Center. And further to that, the province of Ontario did announce provincial funding for social services through municipalities and organizations that administer social services with funding to support them. So the funding will help municipalities and social service providers, such as shelters, food banks, and emergency services, hire additional staff, and find ways to promote social distancing. So this was $200 million that was just announced today from the province. So definitely it's something that we understand as a municipality, and certainly I want to congratulate Mr. Natto from the DSAB, and, you know, my colleagues that sit on that board for their vision with using the Steelton Senior Center. And I certainly support us, the municipality, with that lease agreement as a dollar per month. And I just want to thank him for trying to find some positive solutions in the situation that we're in right now.
Okay. Thank you for that comment. So I'm going to, I was going to have Counselor Dufour speak to some work the DSAB was doing in 7.1, but since we're here, I'm going to have him speak to it now. Counselor Dufour?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as Chair of the DSAB, I just wanted to share with the community a few updates of all that Mr. Natto and his team have been working on in the past week or so. Before I started that, I just wanted to thank Mike, the senior management team, and all of the staff at Social Services. Their area of expertise is one that has seen a huge increase in the last week with requests for social services, and they've done an extraordinary job continuing to offer their services while transitioning to a work-from-home model. In terms of OUW and housing, we just wanted to remind the community that both of these programs are still fully operational, but we're just requesting that people who are looking for service, let they call or email. In terms of food banks, we're happy to announce that we have secured adequate supply for our local food banks, but we are continuing to welcome donations from the community during this difficult time. Our shelters as well, as we can see here, on item 6.7, we now have proper overflow capacity for our most vulnerable residents. I also wanted to say thank you to the province and to our MPP for the funding that was announced today. I know that Mr. Natto was in constant communication with this ministry and also with our MPP over the last week, and we would like to just sincerely thank them for listening to our requests and for remembering that our community immunity is only as strong as our most vulnerable residents, and to thank them for this commitment that they have made. And I'll thank you all as well to my fellow board members who have also been involved in this. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anybody else on 6.7? Hearing none, that leaves only four matters left on our consent agenda. No one texted me on the other four matters, 6.1, 6.2, 6.5, 6.6. But before we vote on consent and leave the consent agenda, do any counselors want to speak to any of the remaining four matters? I'll start with Counselor Christian.
None for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Hollingsworth?
Uh, no.
Counselor Shoemaker?
Well, when you were speaking there, you included 6.1 in that group, but are we leaving that aside for now?
Well, you know what? I was confusing 6.1 with 7.1. So if you want to speak to 6.1, go ahead. Yeah.
So 6.1, I do, well.
Actually, I'm sorry, six, no, I don't want to speak to 6.1. I want to speak to 7.1.
Yeah, the substantive conversation's in 7.1, and the issues raised in 6.1 really are, will be canvassed by 7.1.
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Hilsinger?
No, thank you.
Counselor Nero?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Bruni?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And the rest of the counselors have spoken of the matters they wanted to speak to. So we, you should all have the consent vote in front of you on eScribe, if you could all cast your vote, please. And if any votes are not received by the clerk, she will ask you for them early.
I'm just missing Counselor Shoemaker.
Counselor Shoemaker, are you in favor of consent?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Okay. Okay, so that brings us to 7.1. So we have a report of the CEO here in front of you, and I will open the floor up to any comments. Before I do that, I just want to recognize the significant work that staff, our staff have undertaken over the last couple weeks, and how much collaboration there is going on across the community. There's constant communication with APH, sewer hospitals, and as you can see, the DSAB. And we're working to try and identify challenges our community will face, and what we can do collectively to meet those challenges. And we're certainly kind of faced with, you know, something that's very significant, but I'm heartened by what I've seen, by what the work I've seen happen across our community and the leadership in our community. And that includes our own staff and our CEO and his team here. So I want to thank and recognize them for that. And this, really, I want to give the counselors frankly the floor, so all of you can say your piece, ask your questions, and come to understand what you need to understand and offer your thoughts to us. I have a number of people that have texted that want to speak to this matter, so what I'm going to do is, I'm just going to go down the list, and we'll start at the top, and we'll make our way down. So I'm going to start with Counselor Christian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking at the correspondence, Mr. White, background information, and the fifth point in the memo stating that allowing staff expanded access to bank time, sleep, et cetera. Can he provide us with just a brief summary or a high-level synopsis of what's occurred there, how much has been taken, which staff has, you know, taken advantage of here? If he could just, you know, maybe just give us a brief overview.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian, just on that, we had made the decision about a week and a half ago, once we knew that the schools were going to be closed for the two weeks after March break, and that, of course, the community health concerns, which have been very fluid and continue to be, we needed to ensure that we were able to staff the services that we do need to provide, but also take some steps to remove some of our staff from the workforce where possible, so that we would maintain a healthy workforce in reserve. We also had to deal with the fact that we had staff who were traveling either prior to March break or had left for March break trips before the travel ban took effect. And we also had to take into account that we have staff in various areas with pre-existing health conditions that require them to self-isolate at home. The measures we took were to, for those staff who are able to either work or work from home, obviously they're continuing to provide services, and they are marked present. For staff who are required to self-isolate, either because of travel, because of pre-existing health conditions, or needing to, or because of close contact they've had, they are, those staff are at home, they are allowed to access banked time. So the bank time we have is either sick time, vacation, or in the case where they've built up some bank time using overtime in lieu, they are able to access that, so they are able to remain whole through this two-week period, this week and next week. Obviously, with everything that's occurring and with the announcement today from the province that we will be moving to an essential services mode.
Right.
We will have to assess that tomorrow, once we see the actual list, but we've been preparing to move to this mode in any case. So that's what we have set up for staff for this week and next week. As we move through this, some of those are going to have to change those parameters. We may have to look in the end at laying off certain staff who aren't required, but we will assess that over the rest of this week and early next week.
Thank you. I have another question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I think I'll direct to Mr. White as well, since it's in his report. It relates to transit services. I had a few constituents comment or express concern about the relative safety or precautions being taken, given this virus. Just wondering if Mr. White or an appropriate staff member can comment on what steps transit specifically are taking when people board the bus, the protocol that's being followed there?
Certainly. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian, transit has been our most challenging area operationally to continue to offer a service that is essential for a segment of our population. Certainly, some of the things we've taken into or implemented locally, certainly increased cleaning protocols, ensuring that the, what we're doing and the materials we are using represent the best ways to do it. We've been having those processes vetted through Algoosa Public Health to ensure that they are correct. We've also instituted things like having riders only enter through the rear of the bus, so that they can maintain a safe social distance away from the operator of the bus, as well as implementing social distancing within the ridership itself, to ensure that that occurs as well. It is something that we are continuing to look at. It is a challenge that's being faced by every municipality across Ontario, so we're doing a lot of communicating with other transit services as well, to make sure we're on top of things.
Thank you. I just, if I might, Mr. Mayor, just a quick comment. I want to thank seniors staff of the city, the CEO, yourself. I appreciate, from my perspective, the correspondence and the updates that we're getting and that's being passed on to the city. It's very, everybody knows it's a very fluid situation. It's uncharted territory, and I appreciate the efforts everybody are making. I, just quickly, I had a, we had a meeting at City Hall last Thursday for a board, and the steps that were taken at the front door hearten me, because clearly staff there are making the effort to keep everybody safe. Just the procedure for entering the building, although it's tedious, is very, very necessary, and we're trying to keep everybody safe, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor Hollingsworth?
Thank you. The questions I have are about four questions that have been sent to me by constituents. And so the first question is with regards to, through you, Mayor, to, I guess, the fire chief. With regards to the fire ban, it's my understanding, speaking to a few constituents, that the fire ban, there's a fire ban on right now, and if that is true, can you explain why, when this constituent was saying this person's at home and he's having a small fire in the backyard, when it's still snow around, it's for him and his family to just enjoy a little bit of outdoor? So can you help us understand why?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth, we understand that that might be disappointing to some constituents, but we had to make the decision for the fire ban in order to protect the essential service part of our staff. It does generate calls for us, and we're trying to limit the calls that we have for service to the essential calls.
Okay. And I apologize, but can you give us an idea of approximately the length of ban, or? the length of ban, or is it difficult to say under these circumstances?
Uh, right now, this is just, uh, temporary measure until we can see what these two weeks hold for the province and the country. Uh, it's, it's, I want everyone to understand, it is only a temporary measure.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, my other question, uh, for you, uh, Mr. Mayor, and it's with regards to, um, towards our legal department, I'm not sure who's representing the legal.
We, we have, we have, we have legal on the phone, so you can ask, and I'll direct it to the city's listener.
Okay, thank you. Um, another question from a constituent, this constituent owns, um, a few apartment buildings. And, um, this constituent has done, uh, what they were supposed to do from Algoa Public Health, which is to issue letter to all tenants. All tenants definitely receive the letter, just that states, if you have been traveling outside of Canada, traveling abroad, then please, you must quarantine for fourteen days, so forth, so forth. This individual has brought to my attention about, um, some of the tenants unfortunately may not be, uh, addressing or following the letter, and so is there going to be policing? Um, what can be done if, uh, there's some people that may not be following this strong, strong letter?
Through, uh, you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth. Those directives would come from Algoa Public Health themselves, and where there are, uh, perceived violations, then Algoa Public Health should be notified. They have inspectors and they have, um, firm powers, uh, in aid, to enable them to, uh, take some stronger stands.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so again, um, that is, um, to go to Algoa Public Health. And, okay, and, um, thank you. My next question is, um, where did it go? Um, no, no, duh, 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 how, duh, duh, duh. Um, two final questions. Um, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. White. I know that tomorrow morning we'll have an update on essential services, and, um, will you, obviously you'll be updating the website, um, as best as possible, outlining what those essential services are. Can you give an example of what an essential service is for the, um, public?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth. In this case, the essential services are going to be defined by the province. Uh, so, we always have certain essential services, such as, uh, our fire services. Uh, we will have to look at what the province defines and look at what we do, uh, that, uh, might support those services. It's really something that we have to see the listing, and then we can adjust. Senior management will be meeting tomorrow to, uh, to look at the list, and, uh, it's something we've already been planning on. Uh, but I thank you for mentioning the website. The website will list all our services, and will be updated tomorrow, once we have that sorted out. So, uh, residents and businesses who want to know what, uh, we are doing at any particular point can go to our website, click on the particular service, and get, uh, an update as to what's being offered.
Okay. And in addition to that question, Mr. White, um, this particular constituent was wondering about building permits. Granted, building permits, some of them can be purchased online, which is wonderful. Um, but this particular person was saying that, um, Doug Ford is trying to promote construction. So, um, do you have any comments about building permits at this point, or is it better to wait till tomorrow? To see if that's an essential service of construction? That would keep the economy hopefully somewhat going?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth, we really have to wait until tomorrow and see what the province is providing.
Okay. Um, Mr. Mayor, are you asking comments at this time, or just pure questions?
Well, I've got a whole list here, councillor Hollingsworth, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on to other councillors who have, have questions.
Okay, so my final question, my final question to Mr. White. We all obviously hope that this particular, uh, situation that's happening globally will resolve sooner than later. And I want to just say again to you and your staff and to the hospital staff and everyone in the community for, uh, doing a very good job in, in focusing on this. When this is all behind us, um, Mr. White, will there be a chance for staff to sit down, to come back to council, to outline if there's some projects that we may want to delay, uh, because of, um, potential revenue loss? Um, can you comment on, um, trying to just put together a plan in the future to minimize our expenses, minimize our, um, revenue and, or increase our revenue, or, or just protect our revenues, so forth?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth. Uh, we will certainly be canvassing that, uh, sort of, uh, information and bringing it to council at the appropriate time. Right now, we're, uh, focused on community health, and unfortunately, we just don't have a good idea right now how long that focus is going to need to carry on.
Okay. Thank you. And again, just to reiterate again, Mr. White and staff, thank you for all the extra time you're putting into this. This is, um, a very sensitive topic and all new to everyone, so, um, thank you for all your updates and very hard work. Thank you.
Councillor Shoemaker?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, a couple of, uh, questions on, on, uh, on, uh, issues that residents are, uh, concerned about, specifically with respect to payment of taxes. Uh, the next tax installment is due, I think, May 5th. I noted in Mr. White's report that, uh, interest is being waived on, uh, on the next, uh, tax payment, if you can't make, uh, if you can't make the payment by March 5th. Is there any thought, uh, being given to deferring the tax payment date?
Through you, Miss-
Go ahead, Mr. White. Go ahead and, go ahead and map them.
Yeah. Through, through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker. Uh, we, we will be looking at things. Right now, we are under the interim tax bylaw, so that's why, uh, it was structured that way as, uh, uh, something we could do, uh, quickly and easily. As we, uh, go on, we're going to, uh, have to assess, uh, just what the financial state of the community is and, uh, what we are able to do. It's going to be a very complex, uh, matter to, uh, come to grips with. Uh, this is really an unprecedented situation, and, uh, there, we know that there will be a lot of financial pressures in the community. Uh, the financial pressures, uh, will likely not hit all businesses equally and not all residents equally. Uh, s- some will be impacted more than others. There will also be support coming from the federal and provincial levels of government, and we'll really have to see how all of these things work together so that we can target, get, uh, what we can do appropriately and have the most effect.
If, if I can just add to that, councillor Shoemaker, when we looked at this, and I want to commend you, you called me, I want to recognize you called me about this, uh, last week while, while staff was considering it. We were talking internally about things we could do. This was, this was the, the, the least complex, quick move we can make to give people some relief, uh, without having to amend a number of, of other bylaws. Um, but, you know, I'd just point out that, uh, waiving interest and not starting the interest until a later date is roughly equivalent to deferring the payment. Like, if there's no, if there's no penalty for making the, not making the payment, and if you make the payment a month later and there's no penalty that's accrued, it's essentially a change in the payment date without changing all of the bylaws that relate to that.
Yeah, and, and thanks for that, Mr. Mayor. That's really what I was trying to get to. I, I think the message to the community, uh, it needs to be and, and should be, if you can't make your tax payment date on May 5th, uh, of course, we, uh, as a, as a city, need funds to operate, but if you can't make your tax payment date on May 5th, don't, uh, stretch yourself thin to make it. You will not be charged more, uh, to, uh, pay it on, on June 5th, or on, on, uh, you know, on June 30th, or whatever the case might be. So, uh, I think that message is important to get out to the community, uh, and I think it's, it's a responsible thing for the city to do, uh, not to, uh, not to force, uh, people to make a payment they may not be in a financial position to make.
And, and not to penalize them for not making it, yeah.
Exactly. Uh, the, Mr. White's report, you mentioned, uh, the folks who have automatic withdrawals, uh, can, would have to call to stop those withdrawals. Who do they call, and what number do they call for the benefit of, uh, the community, if you could give us that?
Through you, uh, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker, they should call the, uh, tax division to make those, uh, arrangements. What we will do is, uh, tomorrow, we will update, uh, the, uh, information on the website under that service area, so that, uh, people are directed properly.
Okay, and if folks call the, uh, the general line, seven five nine twenty five hundred, will they get through to someone?
Yes, uh, we are still staffed here, and, uh, we will be down to, uh, obviously, essential levels, but, uh, we will still be answering the phones.
Okay, so if someone needs to, uh, to, uh, stop or, or temporarily stop their, uh, automatic withdrawals for tax payments, they should call the, the general line, seven five nine twenty five hundred to make that, uh, change?
Certainly, that's the message we can give now, and if there's any more specifics to that, we'll discuss it tomorrow at senior management and have the, uh, amended information up on our website.
Thanks, uh, Mr. White. In that same vein, uh, to you, uh, Mr. Mayor, as a, as a member of the PUC board, has there been any discussion with respect to, uh, deferral of PUC, uh, bills for the, for the period or for the duration of the crisis?
Listen, uh, uh, thanks for raising that, councillor Shoemaker. I think it's an important issue, and I think it's an issue that, uh, is on a lot of people's minds. Um, you know, we're, we're asking people to stay home, and, uh, people are, as a result, going to be using more power. And power is one of our biggest monthly expenses. And the PUC has received a number of calls, and I know, uh, people have reached out to me, and I'm sure they've reached out to you, and asking if we could, uh, change peak of time pricing, or if we could give a break on the pricing. And here's kind of a really important point that people need to recognize, that the PUC is charged for the power. And the PUC passes that power charge along. And, uh, what we need to, to actually give people a break is we need the province to, to cooperate with that and, and, and work with us to give people a break. Um, you might have recognized, or might have heard the PUC indicate that they're going to, uh, give people, uh, more time before they would disconnect. So, there is a three-month period, an additional three-month period that we are going to allow people, uh, for time to pay, to give them a greater opportunity to pay before they lose their power. The reality on that is, is we're still paying for all that power that's not being paid for. And, uh, I, I think, you know, it's been suggested to the province, who, uh, is, you know, was part, part of, I think, the conversations that led to the three-month extension, and certainly encouraged it, uh, that, that the province should share in the additional cost to the, the utility, the additional carrying cost of the utility. The reality is, the vast majority of the money on any PUC bill or any distribution bill across the country, across the province, I'm sorry, goes back to the province. So there's very little relief, monetary relief, the PUC can give its customers. Uh, but the PUC would be happy to see the province work with us to give people some relief. Uh, if we could convince the, the province to adjust point, uh, to adjust peak pricing, if we can convince the pro- the province for a period of time to, to, to give people a discount on their power rates, the PUC would be willing, I'm sure, uh, I certainly would be willing, and I think the PUC would be willing to work with that and contribute and, and make the best effort we could on the PUC side for our part of the bill, to help people out. But our part of the bill is, is a very small part of the bill, so I think there's some work here that we can do as a community. And I think you raised a really salient point, uh, but we need our, we need the province to work with us, and we need the province to, to contribute.
Okay. Um, I, I can, you know, I, I'm happy to reach out, I remember, I'm sure those discussions are happening in other communities, uh, as well, but, uh, yeah, it sounds like we're, we're a bit stuck in that regard, uh, until the province, uh, provides municipality relief. The municipality can't really pass on that relief.
Well, we're paying for power, right? So the power that people use, we're paying for it. So we pay for it and we bill it to people. So if we, if we give people, if the province doesn't give the, the distribution company, the PUC, a break on the power costs, but we give people a break on the power costs, where's that difference gonna come from?
Right.
It's gonna come from the remainder of the ratepayers in our community. Right? So, like, if we, we, we're paid, we're charged, we pay, and we pass those charges along. So, uh, there's part of the bill, certainly that's a distribution cost, uh, and, and that's our part of the cost, and, and we as a board would, would, would have to look at that, and our, our executive would have to tell us what we could or couldn't do there. But that's not gonna give people much relief because it's a, it's a pretty small part of the bill. And the big, the big part of everybody's bill is their power charge. And, uh, we pay that. So, if we don't recover that, that comes from somewhere, and where that comes from is the rest of the ratepayers. You're not really giving people relief.
Right. You're, you're giving some relief at the expense of others.
Someone's, yeah, exactly.
Um, okay, well, I, I guess we can, can leave that for the next, uh, council meeting discussion. Uh, in the meantime, I, I'm sure we can all have discussions with our provincial members. Um, with respect to the, the pinch that I think a lot of local businesses are feeling, obviously, the, the province has ordered restaurants and, and, uh, coffee shops and things of that, and food service to, to go to takeout only, or to close, essentially, if they don't have a takeout option. Um, is there any ability, or has there been consideration given to, uh, opening up our EDF to, to help, uh, companies get through these, you know, these critical, difficult weeks? I mean, they, I mean, many of them still have rent to pay, uh, don't have, uh, any income coming in, uh, because they're being, they're, not, not by choice, you know, they're being forced to close. So, is there any way we can, and open up that, uh, fund to, to benefit our local businesses?
Yeah, Mr. CEO, I'll speak to this person, if, if I miss anything you want to follow up, you can. And Mr. Vera, if you're on the line, I think you are, if you want to follow up, you can. Look, councillor Shoemaker, you, you, you had raised this issue with me, and a couple other city councillors have called me about it, and it's something that we, we've discussed internally here. Uh, we want to do everything we can to help, uh, and to answer your question pointedly, we can do anything we want with the EDF. Right? So, so whatever we direct staff to do, they, they'll, they'll do. I think where, what we're trying to sort out right now is, is, as the CEO, uh, indicated earlier, our focus entirely for the last number of weeks has been on the health and safety of the community. And we recognize that the economic health of the community is critically important. Uh, what we really were charged with and trying to do is help, uh, APH, uh, and the Suuray hospitals spread its message, uh, to slow the virus down, because what we don't want to see is a surge at our hospital. So we're, we're, we're really focused on that, and we don't have a full sense of the economic fallout in our own community, or even on our own budget. Um, so we, I think we, we're seeing it now, we're seeing, we're seeing, uh, entrepreneurs, they close up shop for a period. Uh, we're seeing, uh, businesses get really quiet and lay people off. And we're gonna have to assess what that is and looks like, and what we can do to help. One of the few mechanisms we do have, I think you correctly point out, is the EDF. And there might very well be something we can do through the EDF to give some relief to our local businesses. From my perspective, you know, we've always looked at the EDF as, you know, an opportunity to create jobs, preserving jobs, or helping the people that preserve jobs, or helping our entrepreneurs and our small business owners, is the same thing to me. So, so I think it's a natural fund for us to rely on, and I think, uh, we, we have to look to do that. And I think, I believe, over the next few weeks, we'll get a lot more clarity on, on, you know, some of the opportunities before us to help. Uh, we're mindful of those and we're keeping an eye on them. And as we, as, as you can see by our messaging, messaging, as we kind of aggressively try and, uh, slow the spread of the virus while we still can, uh, we're gonna focus on that. And then when we kind of clear sense of that, we'll turn our minds to some of these other things that we, uh, we need to start helping with. Tom, or, uh, Mr. Vera, Mr. White, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker, I'm going to ask Mr. Vera just to, uh, quickly sum up, uh, what we're doing with the business helpline and with what we're doing to listen to business. Uh, while we, it will be some time before we land on what we can do to assist business. Uh, we are in communication with them now, and, uh, Mr. Vera can, uh, talk about the session that he's scheduled for this week that businesses will be able to communicate with us on. Go ahead, please, Tom.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, the council's probably aware, last Thursday, we had an initial teleconference with businesses, and we are having another one, uh, this Thursday. Uh, we're looking at, uh, the same time, nine fifteen AM. And, uh, on the call last week, we had representatives from the Business Development Bank of Canada, Export Development Canada, the Community Development Corporation in Sault Ste. Marie, uh, NOHSC, and, um, also, uh, the PUC, and the Sault Ste. Marie Innovation Centre. So we were able to convey to businesses the, um, the programs that have been recently launched. Uh, the BDC and the EDC have been, uh, extended special funding from the federal government, uh, ten billion dollars. The BDC and the EDC have been extended special funding from the federal government, $10 billion. And so there are new programs that have been launched, small business loan with the BDC up to $100,000, working capital loans, and Export Development Canada has a number of programs as well. So right now, what we're doing is, with our business hotline that we set up, we're fielding calls from businesses and getting a sense of, I think, where the gaps are in these programs and where people need assistance. And so what we're trying to do right now is ensure that businesses are maximizing the available programs to them, and then where we're finding there's gaps or where we're finding there's issues, that's where I think we might be able to come back and propose some solutions to council on how we might be able to help out. As well, I would say that it is, is it a fluid state right now, because we are aware that the federal and provincial government are also coming out with, you know, some more announcements and some more programs to assist businesses as well. So we're definitely got our staff on top of the situation, looking at any and all avenues to support our businesses, and the business hotline that we set up and the email address will allow businesses to call, get one-on-one help from our staff in this regard.
Okay, and that number is, if folks want to call in?
Yes, the business hotline number is 705-574-1230, and the email is businessinfo@cityssm.on.ca as well. A lot of this information, we've put on the city website in terms of the programs and the links directly to the service agencies that are providing those programs.
Okay, thanks. Last question, either to Mr. Mayor or to Mr. White. In your discussions with either Algoa Public Health or Sueria Hospital, is there a sense that the hospital is able to manage the demand thus far?
Thus far, yeah, yeah. You know, but we, Councilor Schumaker, you're, you know, you're really kind of capable and touch guy, you know, like where we are right now is manageable, but this thing could take off really quickly. And there are some infrastructure problems across the province and country with a specific equipment that needs to be available to assist people that we just simply don't have enough of in either Ontario or Canada. And so, you know, that's why we've been really working double time and focused on asking people to self-isolate, asking people who return home from the United States or travel from another country to self-isolate, asking people to understand what COVID-19 is and its symptoms, and if they have any symptoms, to self-isolate, really encouraging people that don't have symptoms to minimize their social interactions and stay home. And that's the best thing we can do for our community in the near term, and frankly, our ability to slow the virus and to minimize a contraction here will have a positive impact on a whole bunch of things, including our economic well-being and our social well-being. So, you know, right now, I think, I think they're managing well, and I want to commend the leadership of the hospital and the workers there for the work they're doing, and we'll just keep at it. We have another call tomorrow with our emergency planning committee, with Counselor Nero and Counselor Bruni and Counselor Gardi are all on that with me, and the hospital's on that, and the PUC's on that, and we have Algoa Public Health engaged, and we'll keep on working through these issues, and we'll do our best to support the hospital in the event that you see a surge.
Yeah, just thanks. That's exactly the information I was hoping to get, just a follow-up on that. With respect to our parks, the weather's turned slightly nicer, and it may be tempting for folks to congregate in our parks, or there's, it's difficult to close them because they're just kind of wide-open areas. But are we encouraging folks to obviously stay inside as much as possible? Don't go, you know, keep your distance from as many people or everybody as much as you can?
Yeah, before the CEO speaks to this, I just want to point out, I think the parks are an indication of how engaged our staff is and how quickly that we've worked. Parks are all signed, the parks are all signed now. The ones that I think they've crossed the city, I'll ask the CEO to confirm, but we have signage at our parks, specifically asking people to stay safe and be careful and to reduce and minimize usage. Mr. CEO, did you want to speak to that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Schumaker. As the mayor has pointed out, we have signed the parks, especially in the areas where we have play equipment, because that's obviously a natural magnet for people to get too close to each other. We will be assessing open spaces like parks in the days to come. There are municipalities in southern Ontario, which of course has been a bit warmer, where they are starting to close parks. So we, you know, obviously, our focus will be on community health and safety, so we will be just continuing to assess that over the next few days.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Schumaker, I think that's the extent of your matters. I'm going to move on. Next on my list here, I have Counselor Dufour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first question concerns the dental services list. I just wanted to ask either you or the CEO if we have any indication from the province of when this list might be available tomorrow, as I'm sure many local businesses will be keen to know the information that it contains.
I do not, so I'm going to ask the CEO if he's received any indication.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Dufour. No, we've received no indication. I would expect they are going to try and get it out as soon as possible, but we've received no official word of when it will be available.
Okay, thank you. My next question to either you, Mr. Mayor, or you, Mr. CEO, could either of you just outline what the testing environment is locally? Specifically, does APH have the ability to conduct some of the mass testing that we have seen done in other countries? And if not, can you speak to why that is?
Did you, so, you know, the testing protocols, it appears to me, in all my communications with APH, are centrally controlled. And so, you know, the number of tests they have available to them and the screening that they're doing to determine whether someone will be tested, it's all prescribed. So the testing environment, I think, is really being controlled not locally, and so I don't think APH is really in any position to make any decisions about mass testing. I think that's a decision that would have to come from the other orders of government. And I think whether or not they do it relates to the availability of the tests. And, you know, from my perspective, Counselor Dufour, I would be very happy to see a significant increase in testing, not just across the province, but across the country. But those aren't, those aren't decisions that currently we are, are engaged in or are making, those decisions are being made by the public health officials at other orders of government. Yeah, did you want to add anything to that? That's my understanding anyway, Counselor Dufour. Did you want to add anything to that, Mr. CEO?
No, that's my understanding as well.
Thank you for that information, Mr. Mayor, and I share your desire there. That is all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Bruni, I have you on my list.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just, for the testing area that they, on, across from the hospital, are we providing any type of service for them, for them to get to the area they get tested?
The city, the city, to my knowledge, is not providing service to bring people to the testing area, no. Am I correct in that regard, Mr. CEO?
That's correct.
Okay, because there was one call that I received, and they wanted to get tested, and they had no access to get the location, so I was just wondering if the city was providing any type of service.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bruni. Simply wanting to be tested would not necessarily enable you to get tested. You do have to go through an assessment with the Algoa Public Health.
Yeah.
And certainly, if the, if Algoa Public Health feels someone needs to be tested, they know there's a number of ways they can access to transportation to get a person there.
Right, okay, thank you. Most of my questions were asked regarding the residential tax and the business taxes, businesses that are going to be struggling in the next month or so, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Gardi?
Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor. First question, first through you to maybe Mr. White. Mr. White, could you explain or to us any relief, any direction, I should say, that province may have instructed landlords in the province in regards to rent collection? Has there been any communication from the province in that regard to landlords in Ontario?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Gardi. I have not seen any communication in that regard, but I'll certainly flag it with staff to keep an eye out, and if we see anything, we'll certainly make you aware.
And make the public aware, more importantly, I appreciate that very much. Another question, Mr. Mayor, through you to Mr. White. Mr. White is a part of the emergency management committee, as a few of us are, Mr. Mayor. I just got a concern in and around logistics, and who would assist in the event of a surge at Sueria Hospital? Now, I trust that Sueria Hospital is on top of these things. Are there any plans to set up any type of, any type of hospital, if you will, setting off-site at Sueria Hospitals? Are they confident that they will be able to do everything that they need to do within the confines of that building?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Gardi. As you know, we are in constant communications, both through our emergency management personnel. The mayor is certainly constantly in communication with Sueria Hospital leadership, and I as well, and the rest of the councillors on the emergency measures planning committee. We will have a meeting tomorrow, and that is one of the discussion items that we will check with them. And obviously, as a corporation, we are ready to assist with whatever they may ask us. There certainly are some existing plans and protocols for accessing public facilities in any number of emergency needs, so we've got those in place, and we'll be ready to respond to Sueria Hospitals.
I'm going to answer that question, too, to make a point that I think needs to be made, that I've been making, you know, quite a bit lately. Counselor Gardi, I don't think any hospital in the province of Ontario or the country is confident that they can handle the potential surge that could occur in their respective communities. Like, you know, the hospital is very capable, and they're providing great care, and I think they are handling things very well as it stands. This virus is very highly contagious, and it could very quickly infect a lot of people and put the hospital above its capacity. And I think every hospital recognizes that is a potential eventuality. So like, we have to stave off that potential eventuality by getting all of our community members engaged and getting them working with us, and getting them to recognize that it's not just a matter of getting a virus and getting over it. It's a matter of virus that really spreads quickly and can infect a lot of people in a very short period of time. And there are some people that are, could be significantly impaired if they get the virus and will need a high level of care. And the greater the number of people that need a high level of care, the more likely it is that we will be beyond capacity. So there isn't a significant, you asked if they were confident, you know, I don't think any, I don't think there's a hospital in the country that's confident.
Well, my question directly through you, or to you, Mr. Mayor, directly, my question is about just what you're speaking of. Like, the hospitals in the province are not confident. I believe that we have some time right now to make those arrangements. I am happy to hear that Mr. White referenced that it'll be part of the meeting tomorrow. I'm just saying, there's no sense in wasting any time here to get something off-site set up in the event that we need it. You and I have discussed this before, other members of council have talked about it. There's no, if we, we may as well overreact. We may as well overreact.
Well, let me assure you, no one's wasting time.
Okay, thanks.
Any, so next on my list is Counselor Nero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have a couple of questions regarding taxes and the PUC rates or the possible changes, but both those were addressed, and I thank you for that. And so, just a brief comment, I want to thank our staff for all the steps they've taken to deal with COVID-19, and also want to thank all those in the community for following the recommendations from APH and dealing with this issue. Most of my calls have been regarding people who choose not to follow those recommendations, specifically people who come back from vacation and are knowingly known not to be following the self-isolation. I find that a little disappointing, and I, it's disappointing that some people are just not getting the message, and it's not from the lack of any of our lead agencies for not trying to get that message out. I just wanted to bring that forward.
Thank you, Counselor Nero. It's something, and I encourage, you know, everybody to talk to their friends and their family, and if you have somebody in your life or you know somebody in your life that isn't paying attention to it or isn't respecting the requests or the messages, talk to them. So listen, on this matter, we've heard from most everybody, there's a few councillors we haven't heard from, so I'll just go through the list of remaining councillors. Counselor Vezo Allen?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, yeah, you're on.
Sorry. I just had one question, as with Counselor Nero, one with PUC related, and that's been answered as well as business, and I certainly understand what's going on there. This is more in terms of transit and more specifically paratransit, but it's something that does come up often and during our accessibility committee meetings, especially in terms of patients that are receiving, have to go for kidney dialysis sometimes daily to the hospital. So my question, I probably, it's either Mr. Lamming or Mr. Vera, who's ever available. So what protocols are we doing to ensure that paratransit is done safely and also without interruption?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Vezo Allen. I'll just give a brief answer to that, and then if Mr. Vera wants to add to it. Paratransit transport to Sueria Hospitals was one of the very first things that was looked at and addressed, and it was addressed in conjunction with Sueria Hospitals, providing us guidance as to what they needed from us to ensure safe transit of those patients, especially the ones, as you mentioned, dialysis patients that need almost daily paratransit services.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. White.
If you, wait, so we're going to move on to Counselor Hilsinger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any further questions. I think everybody's very, very thorough in their, in their questions to all of you, and thank once again to everyone who's working so hard to get everyone through this.
Thank you. Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Similar to Counselor Hilsinger, I don't have any questions, weren't already asked, and I just want to send my appreciation to everybody who's working hard to help prevent the spread of it.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, we've made it through the list on 7.1. So Madam Clerk, did you, is there, is there a motion that we need to have read to accept the report?
Yes, I have a motion moved by Mayor Provenciano, seconded by Counselor Gardi.
Oh, so this is, sorry, I thought there was a motion on the report. You can't read that motion if I'm still in the chair, because I can't move something and, and, and I can't be the mover of it and be the chair of the meeting. So one of two things would have to occur, someone else would have to move it for me, or I could get out of the chair, give it to Counselor Dufour, and move it. Everybody having an opportunity to read that motion now. Would someone, would someone like to move it? I'm having.
Chair Allen, Mr. Mayor.
So Counselor Christian, seconded by Counselor Gardi. You could read the motion, then I'll speak to it, and I'll give Counselor Gardi an opportunity to speak to it as the seconder. Thank you, Counselor Christian.
You're welcome.
Whereas we recognize the COVID-19 pandemic is a highly contagious virus, and whereas we know that the COVID-19- we know that the COVID-19 virus is in northern Ontario and the Algoma region, and whereas we know that hundreds of thousands of people have returned or are returning from March break vacations and from winter destinations in the U.S., and that those returning people represent an additional risk of introducing COVID-19 into and around our community. And whereas the city, Algoma Public Health, Sioux Area Hospital, and other community partners have been advising people to practice social distancing and self-isolate, and specifically asking all returnees from out of country to self-isolate, and whereas we all still need to engage in essential activities such as grocery shopping and picking prescription or over-the-counter medication, and whereas it is critically important to our community, its health and well-being, and the health and well-being of our province and country, that we slow the spread of COVID-19, and that we all have to do our part to slow the spread of COVID-19. Now therefore, be it resolved, that City Council requests all of the citizens of the community to learn about COVID-19 and its symptoms at www.algomapublichealth.ca, self-isolate for 14 days if they have any of the symptoms of COVID-19, self-isolate for 14 days if they have returned from out-of-country travel. For those people not in self-isolation, learn about and practice social distancing. For each of us to encourage our family, friends, and associates to self-isolate if they have symptoms, or if they have returned from out-of-country travel. For each of us to extend a hand and assist those in self-isolation, so that we can assure people have what they need when self-isolating. Be it further resolved, that City Council requests all of the businesses of our community, specifically including all grocery stores, pharmacies, and other operations providing essential services, to learn about COVID-19 and its symptoms at www.algomapublichealth.ca. Establish and implement cleaning protocols sufficient to eliminate and/or reduce the risk of the transmission of COVID-19 at their operation. To reduce and limit the number of people permitted into their store at the same time, and at a level significantly below their capacity, so that all people within their facility have plenty of space to maintain proper social distancing, to mark and maintain proper social distance spacing at all cashier and checkout stations, and to work with and adhere to any recommendation that Algoma Public Health makes that exceed any of the requests made herein.
Okay, so counsel, I wrote this motion this, this weekend after calls from a number of you, and after calls that I had received, consistent with the comments Counselor Nero was making. I received lots of communications over my social media chatters, my social media channels over the weekend, with people just sincerely concerned that they were following recommendations, but other people weren't. And there are some things that we have to do. Like, you still have to go to the grocery store, and you still have to go to the drugstore. And, you know, our businesses are struggling with the new reality that we're all working under. And, and I, I called all the grocery stores on Friday to thank them for their work, to thank their staff for their work, to thank, for them for their effort they're making to keep our, our food supply safe. And I expressed my appreciation to the management of each of them. But we have to do everything we can to slow the spread of the virus. And if you look at Rome's and the work they did early in the weekend, they limited the number of people in their store, they limited and controlled the traffic at the cashier and checkout. If you look at a small place like City Meat Market down here on Queen Street, you can't go in anymore. You got to call ahead, and they pack your order for you, and they meet you at the side door, and you pay with interact or credit and no cash. So there's a lot of adjustments being made. And the reality is, we don't have as a municipality a significant amount of legal authority to direct or govern. And anything that we might be able to do, we have to do through, you know, resources and staff and enforcement. And so what we're trying to really do, in, with the limited authority we have, is send this message out to the community. And I thought it critically important that we, you know, as, as a single body, say these things to the community. And I want to just recognize all the councillors that reached out to me and gave me that feedback. And I want to recognize the people in the community that reached out to me and gave me that feedback. And I want to take the moment, too, to, to thank all of you as city councillors. This is a tough time, and you can see that your staff here is working really hard. And I just want to recognize each of you for reaching out to me and canvassing your concerns with me, and asking me to address them, and not having 11 channels into City Hall, and, and just, and trusting me to listen to what you're saying, and to respect your concerns, and to work, to work on them, and to work at them. And this resolution embodies that. It came from a lot of the listening this weekend I did, when all of you were calling me and talking to me about things you were concerned about. And I think it's critically important that our community hears us say this, and hears us. They can't hear us say it too much. We, as a community, can slow this down. It's going to be very difficult to do. We know it is in Algoma District, and it, it might be here to a greater degree than we already know. But if we work together and for each other, and do this for each other, and minimize our social interactions, and stay home when we can, we can make a big difference in our community. And as a matter of leadership, I thought it was important that we send this message out to the community at large. I hope to have all of council support on it. Counselor Gardi, I'm going to go to you, and then Counselor Christian, I'll, I'll go to you for picking it up for me there. And then if anybody else has any comments, we'll, we'll go around the table. Counselor Gardi?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. You know, you said it very well. You know, a couple of things though, I will reiterate, and maybe expand upon. One is, the work the city staff is doing across the corporation. Everybody who's working hard should be commended for it. Mr. White, who I know is at the helm, we are fortunate to have somebody of your breadth and depth of knowledge, not only of our corporation, but of our community. You know, there are a lot of people who are sacrificing a lot for the betterment of all of us, whether they be nurses, or doctors, or people who work at the grocery stores, or people who are up and then leaving until this afternoon, were driving cabs around and collecting our, our garbage. You know, that dedication, our community is evident, and our dedication and respect for those efforts should be commensurate. Everybody who can stay home needs to stay home. Obviously, as I mentioned, if you have to get something, one good strategy that, you know, you'll hear about is if there is one person in your family who you can make the person to go and get things. So there's that, only that one point of contact in the community for your family. I think that's important. You know, you mentioned Rome's, Mr. Mayor, I heard great news about them. We need all of our grocery stores and pharmacies and essential services that are going to stay open to implement measures to do as best we can to hinder the spread of COVID-19 in our community. And, you know, you need to keep your family and friends, you need to hold them accountable. If you know that they're doing things that they shouldn't be doing, you need to exercise that accountability. Parents, caregivers to children, please do your best to exercise your influence over those you love. Mr. Mayor, you've been doing great work, too. I appreciate you taking the time to answer our questions. And the quicker, quicker we nail this down, the sooner we can get back to business, which will be good for the business community. But right now, this is a healthcare issue, much more so than it is a business issue, and we got to get through that first. And we're all involved in that, and we have the responsibility to. Thank you.
Counselor Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank staff. I didn't mention that at the beginning, and I, that would certainly be remiss if I didn't do that. All the points have been made. We're all responsible. We're responsible for each other, and we're responsible for ourselves. And we all have to take necessary precautions. It's been said already, but this is one time where it needs to be reiterated and time again. The fact of the matter is that this, this virus sits idle, and you may feel well today, but you could in fact be carrying it. So you can't, you can't take it for granted, and everybody has to do their part. I'd like to think that, and I said firsthand, that many people are taking it very, very seriously, and that's a good thing. And, and that's where our community can band together, show our support and our unity, and many people are doing that. If there are people out there that still don't get the message to all of us, when we see it, make sure they, we drive home the point. So you've covered everything off. Thank you very much, and the next few weeks will tell the tale. Thank you.
Do any other councillors want to comment on the motion?
This is Counselor Hollingsworth. I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I just want to reiterate about how basically the importance of staying at home, but I also want to elaborate that there's a lot of individuals out there living alone, senior individuals. Living alone, if you know anyone that does and is on their own, please reach out to them. Because of today's technology, there is many great ways to reach out, to break this social isolation in a safe manner. For example, Zoom. As many of you know, there's been more Zoom parties happening online. Set up a list of family members that can talk all at once. Set up a Zoom dinner party to break that isolation. And FaceTime is another excellent technology. So yes, staying at home is extremely important, but we also must, must remember that mental health is a crisis. And as people are more and more isolated from others, families, friends, loved ones, mental illness may be a real additional concern. So please, think about those individuals on their own and reach out to them. Use technology. Technology is helping with many great ways, and it's time for all of us to remember others. In closing, if it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to comment on the nurses. There's many healthcare professionals helping, as we just heard, but I just want to reinforce. The College of Nurses of Ontario has been sending email around today to all nurses, practicing nurses. They want the message out to non-practicing nurses. To enhance nursing resources across the system, we are asking anyone that has practiced nursing in the past to contact the College of Ontario Nurses and talk about potentially being an extra source, just to make sure that we do have enough hands on deck. So the College of Nurses are asking all registered nurses to send out this message. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillors want to speak to the motion? Hearing none, we'll, we'll call a vote in the motion. Counselor Christian?
Three, four?
Counselor Hollingsworth?
Four.
Counselor Vezel Allen?
Four.
Counselor Dufour?
Four.
Counselor Shoemaker?
Four.
Counselor Hilsinger?
Four.
Counselor Nero?
Four.
Counselor Bruni?
Four.
Counselor Gardi?
Four.
Counselor Scott?
Four.
I'm also in favor.
So that motion carries? And under Agenda Item 7.7, for planning, there were two planning applications, A220Z with respect to 305 Selby Road, and A320Z, 36 Wright Street. So I have a motion by Counselors Shoemaker and Hollingsworth, resolved that planning applications, A220Z, 305 Selby Road, and A320Z, 36 Wright Street, be postponed?
Counsel, any questions about those, those applications?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one brief question. I would assume that the applicants were made aware, and that there was, or that they would be dealt with next meeting or something?
Mr. CAO, please confirm.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Nero. Yes, the applicants were made aware, but when exactly we will be dealing with them is very uncertain. I know the province has come out with some of the legislation they've been passing, which would have the effect of putting in a ban, so any of the formal statutory deadlines regarding things such as this.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
It's my understanding from planning staff as well, that they will be reposting a notice.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. Any other questions on the, the resolution? It's electronic, it's in front of you. If you can cast your votes, please.
I'm in favor. My eScribe isn't working.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do you have, do you have everybody noting that Counselor Shoemaker's in favor?
Yep, motion carries.
Okay. You can, you can move on, Madam Clerk, to the bylaws.
Under bylaws, I have a motion by Counselor, I'm going to change it from, oh, actually, I'll leave Shoemaker and Hollingsworth, because I'm accepting the bylaw that Counselor Shoemaker has a conflict on. So resolve that all bylaws under Item 11 of the agenda, save and accept bylaws 2020-76, which has already been passed, and 2020-77, under date March 23, 2020, be approved?
Counselor Scott?
Uh, yeah, four. Sorry, it's on mute.
It's right, Counselor Gardi? Counselor Bruni?
Four.
Four.
Counselor Nero?
Four.
Counselor Hilsinger?
Four.
Counselor Shoemaker?
Four.
Yeah. Counselor Dufour? I just, this just came up on our computer, so he's obviously on mute. Counselor Vezel Allen?
Four.
Counselor Hollingsworth?
Four.
Counselor Christian?
Four.
Okay. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
The motion carries. And then I'll just cast the accepted bylaw with respect to 73 Brock Street. A motion by Councilors Hilsinger and Hollingsworth, resolved that bylaw, 2020-77, being a bylaw to authorize the acquisition of property located at Civic 73 Brock Street, Union Cab. Oliver and Leslie Wilson be passed in open council this 23rd day of March 2020?
So Counselor Shoemaker's conflicted on that. I think he's the only one who doesn't have eScribe working, so I think the remainder of them should be able to vote.
I'm just waiting for Counselor Hollingsworth and Counselor Gardi.
I'm in favor. Didn't pop up on my screen.
Counselor Hollingsworth?
Uh, four.
Okay, so it's passed. Madam Clerk, before you, you get to the resolution to, to close the meeting, I just want to just end with a message to, to all of you, again, expressing my appreciation for your support and all of your communications to me, and a broader message to the community. I, as the mayor of the community, I'm confident that the community is communicating properly on this, and that the stakeholders are all working with one another, and that all of us have the community's best interest at heart, and everybody's doing hard. I'm confident we'll continue to work hard, and I'm confident that we will do our best with this, and that we will get through it together in a positive way. But again, we need everybody's help, and we need everybody to work together. So I'd ask everybody to learn about COVID-19, visit algomapublichealth.com, learn about our public health professionals' instructions, and do your best to minimize your social interactions. Stay home, and, and, and think about our larger community. So thank you very much. Thanks, everybody, for your cooperation tonight. This was an interesting thing to do, and hopefully, we won't have to do this much longer. Hopefully, we will all be able to get together again soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have, have the motion for adjournment up. All in favor, the, the motions on your screen, if you can vote, please.
It's a motion by Counselors Shoemaker and Hilsinger, that the council now adjourn.
Counselor adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, everyone.